Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your attendance. We have a outstanding program this evening. So let's start our program. And Jay, sad you want to come forth and let us have the pledge of allegiance. Coming up, Jay. And followed by Phyllis Coe. Phyllis, if you want to join us also.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me with a Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Now, Phyllis?
Yes, sir.
I want to be remiss. How many years did you serve our country as commissioner?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years. Okay. Tremendous. All right, now, Ravi? Come on up. You're going to do a special invitation. You got it memorized?
I don't, but I cheat.
Ravi, should lead us, please, stand and let us have our invitation.
We want to have slightly different invitation this time. I'm going to start with deciding a small poem in memory of our fallen heroes in war and terror. After that, small, very small invitation. If I die in war zone, box me up and send me home. Put my medals in my chest. Tell my mom I did my best. Tell my dad not to bow. He won't have to get tension anymore. Tell my brother, study hard. Key to my bike is permanently with him. Tell my sister not to be upset. Her brother will take a long sleep after sunset. Tell my nation not to cry because I'm a soldier born to die. Now, the invitation. God, pray for our servicemen in war and terror. Too much blood has been shed. Trillions of dollars have been spent. God, help bring this war to end. Give our leaders, visit them, so that they can finish this war as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ravi. Very nice. Very moving, Ravi. Who are we? All right. First of all, we're an educational forum. We're the traditional Republican Club of Collin County. This is our 52nd year. We have a new platform this year. What does it say there, Delore? Traditional Republican Men's Club. We're men and women, joined together, learn together, and work together for the Collin County Republican Party. Is that a pretty good theme?
Indeed.
Y'all like that?
Sure.
Okay. Dixie?
I do.
You like Dixie? All right, Dixie, we've got Dixie's lesson. Okay. Those are things. And why are we here? Again, continual education on issues that we can do something about. Okay. Now, we have an upcoming event, and that is Lincoln Day. What is Lincoln Day? It's an annual? Come on, you know what it is, true. Annual fundraiser. That's where you reach in your pocket and get money, right? All right? And we got an objective this year. The place needs you to park it. You see? So we got to do a little special job. But to inform us on the evening, we have the co-chairman of Lincoln Day this year, and that's S.R.E.C., remember Chuck Branch. We have to come out and tell us what.
Who's your team?
Absolutely. Sir, I appreciate it. So talking about reaching into your pockets, how many of y'all have not signed up yet? Oh, and a couple of y'all. So everybody's signed up here?
There were more than eight.
Well, what am I doing here? So I'm just talking to a few of you. As everybody knows, or most of y'all may know, Danny Crenshaw, Congressman Danny Crenshaw's going to be here. He was the lead lieutenant commander, Navy SEAL III. Lost his eye in combat, also on Saturday Night Live. In case y'all didn't know that, pretty funny. If you haven't seen him, go look at it. It's great. But there's another part of this that we're doing this year. We want to be able to honor our servicemen. And part of doing that is we're asking people to donate a ticket to a veteran. Okay? So we're going to, we're working with groups of veterans to attend. And it's going to be a first come, first served basis. And so we ask you also, if you don't mind, to donate a ticket. And you can do that on the website as well. Go there, I think, let me see if you, he didn't put it on here. It just says veteran special on there, but on the actual webpage, it has a button that you can click on. You can donate to the veteran. Okay? To the veteran fund, you can donate a fable or a ticket, whatever you're comfortable with. Okay? So that's something special. And this event, what we're looking to do is we're going to honor them by playing their theme song for each branch in the military also. Because we want to make sure that they know that they're welcome. We appreciate their service. We appreciate all they're doing for them. Something different we wanted to add in there. We want to make this as eventful for them, for all of y'all. We know that y'all spent a lot of money funding this event. It's going to be very, our goal is to make it the most hospitable event you've been to, and that this is something that you remember. So if you need anything, please contact me. Chuck@likechuckbranch.com, and I'll be happy to help you answer any questions there. Does anybody have any questions while I'm here? Yes, sir?
Silent auction items, talk about it.
Okay, yes. Okay. Silent auction items, we still need as many as we can get, different industries. The entertainment industry, restaurants, golf packages, you know, already said restaurants, any kind of like a spa package, hunting trips. We've got some great live auctions items having to do with that. The chair is going to be involved in one of those. I mean, he's giving a guy away as well, so it's going to be pretty cool. But if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'd love to help you guys, okay?
Okay, now Chuck, how's your sales going? You're the sales manager. You doing a good job?
Yes, sir. I'm doing a good job, I think. Actually, we do need to get more sales in the door. We're, how many are, we're about 350?
We're about 370 right now.
370, okay. So 370, our goal is to get to about 8850. All right? So let's try to push those numbers up there. I believe we can do it. We're doing really well. And there's still a lot of people who normally come to the event, still haven't. We're reaching out to some of the people that volunteered during the campaign. We're also going to reach out to people who actually came, picked up signs and donated some money. They don't normally attend or haven't been involved in the party. So that's part of what we're doing, but we need y'all's help. Thank you all.
Thank you, buddy.
Appreciate you, sir.
Now, a follow-up on that. We have reserved three tables. Technical people, don't trip, okay? Three tables for the event. Now, I've talked to a lot of you. This is what is so important. Make your check and fable this year to the Collin County Republican Party, not to our club. Now, I'm going to begin with me, our Neil, our Tim, our treasurer, and let me know, confirm that you're going to be at one of our three tables. Now, if we have to get a fourth table, we will, but right now, by our verbal conversations, we have three tables plus a couple extra. So, but this is a part of it, that you make your commitment. So let me know if you can't go, if you've got to change your mind, but if you get your check in, we need to get it in as soon as possible. Right, Neil?
Right.
All right. Now, our executive director, I don't like you sitting in the back. Do you want a little bit of attention? Do you want to come up and say anything? You got 35 seconds if you want.
I'll just take it from the back right here. You know, Lincoln Day is the fundraiser, keeps the engine going for our party. It covers about two-thirds of our expenses of keeping the office open and keeping my daughter in college, is where all my salary goes anyway. So the bottom line is we need your help. Silent auction items would be great. Buy tables. I'd like to thank the men's club, who's leaving right now with three tables, possibly a fourth. I'd like to thank Pam Little, who picked up two tables tonight. Thank you.
Now, the three tables we need, Joe, you help with this, but we need about 10 members from our club to be volunteer workers that evening. Now, we've done this, John, you know, every year. And the main thing is helping people check out at the end of the event. So if you see that you're on an educational event and deal with fellow Republicans and paying their bills, okay, on their auction item, volunteer. Let me know, let Neil know. But we need about 10 members from our club to help in this event that evening. Okay? Now, one last thing. Go to Tuesday morning. You know what Tuesday morning is? That's people have a big garage sale every Tuesday morning. And get something cheap and triple the prize, bring it up here and triple your prize, and we'll put it in the auction item. So there's plenty of rep inventory items, right, Fred?
Yes, sir.
You find all kinds of subjects out of the Tuesday morning, right? Okay. But we need some extra gifts because that's about a third of our revenue from the auctions. Right, John?
Yes, sir.
Have you got an item for the auction yet?
Absolutely.
All right. You're a good man. All right. But we need your help in these areas on us still. Now, coming back to our program. In our outreach of, Delore, are you ready? Okay.
What do you want, Coca-Cola?
And our film, we're going to be on Facebook with Coca-Cola. At least this is a real thing. Let's go to our page. And now, why is this important? No. The one with the representatives. Jeff Lee. All right, there you go. All right. If you go to the Texas House of Representatives, well, page, you can follow literally what your representative, Matt Shaheen, Jeff Lee, Candy Noble. Who's the other one?
Scott Sanford.
Huh?
Scott Sanford.
Justin Holler.
But go and see exactly what they're doing. Click on the bills that they authored, or sponsored, or cosponsored. I don't care. Click on any of them. Can you do that? This is a tremendous tool. Okay, Mark?
To see whether they're working for us.
Huh? And see exactly what they're doing, and what bills they're endorsing, or what bills they're putting forth. Now, the session's just opened, but this is a tremendous item to go Monday morning. Judge Rush, and see what your representative's up to.
I do it every morning. I don't wait till Monday.
What did Mark say?
Said, I do it every morning. I don't wait till Monday.
Okay. But this is tremendous tool to follow your representative. And then what's chapter two? Pick up the phone and call them. What's your opinion? Get involved. You can actually read, go ahead and move it around a little bit. You can actually read the entire bill when you go to the website. And if you wish to do that, especially House Bill 2, that is creating so much problem right now. Or you may follow the Dallas Bond and News and see what they have to say. But are you familiar with this tool? Become familiar with it and utilize it so that you can become more effective as the public citizenry. All right, Neil? I say that okay?
You did good.
All right. Now, how important is education? This is a little personal story, but I'm going to tell you the reason I'm going to be really concerned about it. If you don't know, you should know because you've known me for 35 years or 40, but there were seven in my senior class. Okay? And I can actually say I rode a horse one day to school because it was so muddy that school buses couldn't run. And education, I always said to myself, I don't take this wrong, but it makes a hell of a difference in your world. And I have no complaints. I've been married 52 years, and I'm wonderfully blessed. But I've always thought to myself, if I had a college education, what the hell would I have come? You know, what difference would it make? Now, I've stepped studies. Right, J.J.? We've been studying for five years together. Six years. Well, a monthly think tank, and we take on a lot of subjects. But the educational system in Texas is the backbone of our leadership in our whole society. The Masons, Masonic Logists, were the founders in one incumbent education. And that brings us to this young lady. She took Tatsy Miller's place. Tatsy was on the board.
Twelve years or?
Thirty years.
Thirty years, okay.
I'm a fly. I'm an extra fly.
But Tatsy now, you're a Republican. You were elected, I got to look at the notes here. You were elected in November 2018, so this is your first term. Right? How many years is the term? Is it four?
Four.
Four years.
Thank you.
And how many members are on the board?
I'm going to do all that in my presentation.
All right. The point is this, as Tatsy would tell you, we need conservative leadership on the board because you choose the curriculum, bottom or top, you regulate the classes. So with that introduction, will you tell us what your thanks are? And also, all right, Pam. Come on up. Pam Little, everyone.
Thank you for having me. And I'm extremely honored to represent all of you on the State Board of Education. As Richard said, it's a very important thing, our education, and education is one of the things that drives employers to Texas, drives business to Texas. So we've got to be sure that we've got that educated workforce. As Richard started out, we have 15 members on the State Board of Education. Each one will represent 1.8 million people, and that's why you will see the State Board of Education's on your ballot. You will see that person before your state senator because we represent so many people. I'm thinking it's, this was from the 2010 census, so it's probably closer to 2 million people that we each one represent now. The Commissioner of Education is appointed by the governor. Mike Marath is the current commissioner. He is from our area. He was on the Dallas School Board. And this is a map of all the 15 districts. And I like to show this because you realize the geography that's involved in this. And up there in the panhandle is Marty Rowley, who is our vice chair, and you see how much he has to cover. And then over here in El Paso, in number one, is Gina, Georgina Perez, who is our secretary. So between them, they probably represent at least half of the geography, but maybe only a fifth of the people. But that's just the way Texas is. And then this is our district, District 12. I'm fortunate that it is very small geographically. And you see where I've outlined, this is a part of DISD that is in the district. And I saw where Jeff is on the redistricting committee. I'm going to have some conversations with him because I want Dallas County out of my district. We barely won this seat, and most of Dallas County, if you don't know, went almost all Republican. And thank you. I'm a Democrat, you're right. Thank goodness for Collin County because that's what put me over by about 11,000 votes. So, anyway. Very important that we pay attention to our redistricting when it comes up. The chair of the State Board of Education is appointed by the governor for a two-year term. The current chair is Donna Behorek now, and she's actually Spring Branch, the Houston area. Already mentioned that Marty Rowley from Amarillo is our vice chair, and Georgina Perez is from El Paso. Currently, the board is made up of 10 Republicans and five Democrats. Yes?
Pam, when you say that the governor appoints the chair, he chooses somebody from who's been elected, or could it be somebody outside?
No, no, no. He has to choose a board member. A board member. The commissioner, obviously, is not a board member, but the chair has to be a board member. And Tatsy served as the chair at one point in time. The board meets five times a year for four to five days in Austin, and I've yet to figure out any rhyme or reason for our meeting dates. We met January 28 through February 1st. We're going to meet April 2nd through April 5th. We're going to meet June 14 through the 19th. And then we're going to meet September the 13th through about the 17th, and then get in November about the 13th through the 17th. The little April, that April date sort of throws. The State Board is made up of committees. The first one is the Committee of the Whole, and that's when we sit there as a total group and we hear from the commissioner. He reports to us things that are going on at the agency. And then we also have, and that's where we will do votes, you know, based on information that's come from committees. One of the things that I really enjoy about that Committee of the Whole, especially on Friday mornings when we meet, is we have student performers. And it is so much fun to see all the different things our students are doing. We've had a jazz band. We've had a mariachi band. And then I had the opportunity to have dinner Thursday night with a career in technology group where the culinary class from Demi Texas served dinner. That was an interesting dinner, but, so those are some of the things that I really enjoy. Then we have the Committee of Curriculum Instruction, which will review the Texas essential knowledge and skills. And for those of you that may not be familiar with that term, that is essentially the state's curriculum. And we will review that first. We have review of the instructional materials and any other proposed changes in curriculum. That goes to the Curriculum and Instruction Committee first. And that committee will review it, and then they will bring things to the board for final action. I was honored to be put on that curriculum committee. What you may not know about me is my background is educational publishing. So I know the state's curriculum in just about every single area. In fact, Donna, we were talking about some things, and Donna made, the chair made a comment to me. She said, "I don't think we've ever had anybody with your expertise on the board before." So there's going to be some things that the publishers may not be happy about it because I know some of the little tricks that they would try. I was also appointed to that curriculum committee and am the vice chair, which I thought was pretty exciting, being a newbie on the board. The Committee of School Initiatives, that will review the charter school applications. And then we also have a permanent fund, a permanent school fund. For those of you that may not have heard of this before, this is an intergenerational fund, and right now is worth $41 billion. It is second only to Harvard as an educational fund. And it is the State Board's responsibility to monitor this fund, to oversee this fund. It was legislated in 1854, if you can imagine. Way back then, our Texas forefathers had the foresight to set aside money to pay for school books for our students. And then it was constitutionally protected in our Constitution of 1876. Now, you can imagine a fund sitting at $41 billion. Everybody kind of wants a little piece of that. Well, you know, give me just a little bit of this, or give me just a little bit of that. And when you're elected to the State Board, it's almost like you take an oath to defend that fund with your wife. And the reason that you have to do that is because it's intergenerational. It's not for just today. It's to provide instructional materials. It used to be textbooks. We changed that several years ago to instructional materials for future generations. So that is absolutely why it is so important that we protect that fund. One of the issues that's going around now is 7 billion of that is with the land commissioner. And because it's in oil and gas resources, because it's in real estate, and he's trying to say that that's his. And he's ruffled a few feathers on the State Board of Education, so I'm not sure where we're going to end up with that. But that's the State Board's money, not the land commissioner's. The board will hear public testimony on all different issues. Most often, it is on the instructional materials. Many times, it's on the TEACs. Every 10 years or so, the TEACs will come up for a revision to be renewed, and many times, people will have comments that they want to make, so the board hears that. Specific courses, interestingly enough, what I discovered at the last board meeting is that speech is no longer a required course to graduate from high school in the state of Texas. Now, hopefully, the districts are requiring it, but the state of Texas does not require that. And we had a group come, from the speech group, come talk to us about trying to make speech a fine arts force so that it could be used as an elective, or the students could do that. And we discovered, as we looked at it, that the TEACs just simply would not match up, so we were not able to do that. But it's a concern to me. I think as you look at what employers are going to want in their future employees, they're going to want them to be able to communicate. They're going to want them to be able to do presentations. So I want to go back and revisit some of that. And also, any changing high school graduation requirements. Appointing educators to work groups. I think this is one of the most important things that we do. And when I say a work group, this is a group of teachers, or a group of administrators, or educators who might look at reviewing the TEACs. And this is where we've got to have conservative people on those committees. Because we don't want our state curriculum to be liberalized. We want to make sure that it stays conservative. So my policy, when anybody sends me a name of an educator to be on a committee, is I'm going to have a personal conversation with them. I want to know their worldviews. I want to know what they think.
Doesn't the code also call for citizens, business people?
Citizens can do that too. Absolutely.
Don't be misled by that. They are as important on these work groups as the educators are.
Right. But my point is, is that I want to be sure I have a personal conversation with everybody that serves on them. A new thing that just recently happened, the legislature passed a bill for the State Board to oversee a quality evaluation of the instructional materials. We've been needing this for a long time. And what do you mean, somebody said, what does that mean, a quality evaluation? Let's say you've got a Texas history book, and one book has all of Travis's letter reproduced, and then beside it's got a picture of the original one. Or you've got a Texas history book that's just got two quotes out of the letter. So to me, the book that's got much more value is the one that the student sees the entire letter and also sees what the letter originally looked at. One of the problems that Member Hardy and I are having with this is the state of Texas hired a group to do this that we feel may have some common core influence. We had some people in Texas apply to do this, and for some reason, the commissioner chose a group out of Louisiana. So that's something that Member Hardy and I, she's over in Fort Worth, if you don't know. She and I are going to look very closely at this and see what the issue is there. One of the things that we've got to do with our students is we've got to get them ready to learn. And ready to learn means they've got to be reading on grade level by the third grade. Because from kindergarten to third grade, they're learning to read. And then after third grade, they learn by reading. So that's why the reading is so important. The other thing that we've got to do after we get them ready to learn is we've got to get them ready to earn. And this is very important to me, and this is one of the reasons that I'm so involved in this. I want to see our students productive. I want to break this generational poverty where you just lay on the couch and get a check. And I think that we can do that, and one of the things that we can do this with is the increase in the career and technology certificates. I had the opportunity to tour the Career and Technology Center in Garland, and I know most of schools have one, but I happened to tour that one. It was unbelievable the things those students are accomplishing. They had motorcycle repair. They had aviation. They had architecture. They had fashion design. For the ladies in the room, what they had done is they had taken some of the coolest outrageous shoes that you would only see at Neiman's, and they had asked their students to design a dress to match the shoes. And it was unbelievable what those students had done. It was very exciting, some of the things that they're doing there. This was extremely upsetting to me that, as I said, the commissioner spoke to us, and this came directly from his slide. And this came from the STAR test, but this is also reflected on the national test. Our reading scores are dropping. Our reading level, our third graders, only 43% of them were reading on grade level. Math, 41%. And then this is especially upsetting. Kids that were like 30% are on grade level for both reading and math, it was only 34%. So what's causing this, and what can we do about it? One of the things that's happened, before I talk about this, one of the things that happened is we just passed some new language arts TEACs. And in those language arts TEACs, you're going to find phonics again. You're going to find vocabulary. You're going to find decoding. We are also addressing dyslexia at the State Board of Education. We have a new dyslexia handbook that all the districts have now.
Pam, what are TEACs?
I'm sorry, it's the state's curriculum, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought I explained that fact there when I was talking about that. But we just passed that new state curriculum. It's language arts, English language arts, K through A. So hopefully, we will get back to teaching reading the way it should be taught. Another thing that would help to achieve... Another thing that would help to achieve reading on grade level is a pre-K program. There's such a high percentage of our students now that are on the free and reduced lunch. And we've got to get them ready so that they come in ready to learn. One of the things that has been funded by the legislature are reading academies. During the summer, we're gonna be having reading academies. And the purpose of these reading academies is to teach reading teachers how to teach reading. Teach them phonics, teach them how to use vocabulary. And when they try to intervene with a child, and intervention is not a comic book of the Scarlet Letter. It's strategies. And that's what we want the students to learn. This is one of my goals, is to stay on top of these reading academies this summer, to be sure that that kind of instruction is going on. This is what the reading academies will look like. They will be teaching effective research-based and scientifically validated reading instruction methods. And that's what we've got to get back to. You know, many times, curriculums, education will sort of chase its tail, and new curriculums will come in. And part of the problem that we had with our reading was whole language, where we weren't teaching our kid with sight words, and we weren't teaching them skills that they could use in the future. And then we need to get them to learn to earn. As I mentioned, that the career and technology programs, I think, are doing a great job of creating interest in our students. They create certificates from these programs that enable students to leave high school and be able to make a good living. One of the things that we've got to do is we've got to increase these certificates. And I found out just the other day that there are a lot of certificates out there, but they haven't been approved. So that's one of the things that I wanna look into, is to approve these certificates. And then update them with regard to industry standards. What I found out when I was in Garland is they had an architectural tech certificate. But that certificate required the students to master an outdated software. So if a student wanted to get the job at the architectural firm, they had to master the outdated software and then learn the current software. So that's one of the things that we've got to do, is we've got to get those certificates in line with industry standards. And that's something that I want to do.
Question.
Yes.
Do you coordinate with specific industries on what they need? And what they predict their needs are in five years, ten years?
Yes, absolutely. We've got to do that, so that we get our kids ready.
Are you doing that?
That I don't know, that's my challenge. These are my two goals that I'm gonna work on, but that is a good question, and I will find that out because obviously, we drop the ball with the architecture thing for sure.
Those people will jump in.
Yeah. I also think it's very important that we teach our students to think critically. You know, when I was in Ms. Parker's fifth grade class in Bryan, Texas, I had no idea I'd be doing a PowerPoint presentation, be working a computer, be doing the things that I do. But I did learn to think critically. I learned to analyze, evaluate, synthesize, infer, to do all those things. And we've got to be sure that we embed that critical thinking into our students' knowledge and into the curriculum.
True.
Let me go back a little. Oops. What did I do?
Oh, lost the signal. Oh, one back to that cut there. See if we get you back there.
I'm sorry.
One of the Democrats must have done.
Yeah, they didn't like what I was saying.
Okay. Well, while he's looking for that, is civics a part of the curriculum?
I'm gonna get to that, I've got a whole, about six slides on that, if we can get them up.
Hmm, and how about the Robin Hood Fund?
You know, one thing that the state board does is we don't do anything with funding. So you'll have to talk to your legislators about that. Now, one thing too, that I will talk about, this was just recently put together. This is the Texas Commission on School Finance. And Dr. Kevin Ellis sat on this board, and he is on the State Board of Education. So this was a very detailed document, went into a lot of work. I'm hoping that this is something that the legislators will take to heart, and that they will put into legislation.
Well, I gave you enough time, Delarue.
I know. I don't know if I have to do that.
Delarue, do you need more light?
No, that's not the... Thirty-one, wow. Okay.
Let me get, which slide was on, I was on testing. Okay, let me go down. Is that the last one?
Maybe up or left?
You know, testing is, when we started out with No Child Left Behind, the purpose of that was to catch those third graders, so that they weren't reading on level, to catch them. And then the testing companies got hold of it, and it became No Child Should Be Left Untested. So the testing is legislated. I do think we need testing for accountability. I don't know that we need the quantity of tests that the STAR test has produced. When they first started talking about the STAR test, they were going to let the end of course, which is what we used to call final, be the summative test out of each high school course. Well, then the testing companies got hold of it, and made it a whole other being. So that got out of control. We started out in Texas with the TABs, which was the Texas Assessment of Basic Skills. We moved to TEAMS, to TACTS, and now we have the STAR, which is the State of Texas Assessment and Readiness Skills.
Pam, are we teaching to pass the tests now, or are we teaching for critical thinking?
One thing I like about the STAR test, I mean, they're still teaching to the test. But the thing that I like about the STAR test is it has critical thinking in it. This was just, this TABs was just two plus two equals four. This STAR test, and I'll show you one of the problems, you have to figure out how to set up the equation. So that's the difference in the testing, and I do support that, I do support accountability.
Excuse me, Pam, but what's your opinion of the MAP testing?
The MAP?
MAP testing, so there's testing that's done, it's only...
Is that the one Plano does?
Yes, it's only eight hundred thousand students in Texas do this testing.
I, to me, that's a formative type of testing, where they form instruction from that test, is that correct?
Yes, but it also maps student progress and where they are, and it's an adaptive test that helps.
I, you know, anything that can do to help with instruction, I'm for. I mean, you know, it's hard to know where students are. This is an example of a math problem, third grade math problem. And see here, you have this, what we call the word problem. And we talk about the teacher had seven hundred and thirty-six crayons, she threw away a hundred and ninety-seven, and then bought a hundred and fifty more. Rather than just saying what's the answer, they have to set up the equation. So you see the difference in those two? And that's one of the reasons that I feel like the STAR test has made an improvement. Although, I don't know that we've gone so far that we still don't need some rote memorization on some of these tests too. I wanna talk to you about the Constitution. I always get asked, and this is your question on civics, I always get asked, "We don't teach the students the Constitution." And what I wanna show you is, this is in the TEACs, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills for Social Studies, which is the state's curriculum. And this came from the celebration week that every social studies class will do, K through eight. They have a celebration week. And in that week, they have appropriate instruction concerning the intent, meaning, importance of the Declaration, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and their historic content. So that's every social studies class, even if it's world history, even if it's world geography, even if it's world cultures, they all have that.
Question though, does, do the issues with the Constitution deal with some of the progressiveness that we're seeing in the courts now for the, in other words, to say that here's what we've done in the past, but right now, it's a different story?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, what I've looked at, it presents the Constitution. Now, I can't tell you how a teacher's gonna interpret that.
That concerns me.
Yeah, that is the big concern, I agree. But at least what the state board is doing is we're saying, "This is what you have to teach." And we even do it, we talk about the Texas Constitution and compare that to the US Constitution.
Can you go back one slide, please? Am I reading this correctly? All of this information that's supposed to be taught and included in the curriculum is in a one-week period?
For all of social studies. Like if you've got Texas history, if you've got world geography, which normally that is not a subject that would you, you would find in world geography. But you have to have it in world geography.
So we're, but we're, am I understanding this correctly? We're gonna teach these folks all of this information in a one-week period?
Well, they should have, they should have some knowledge of it, but it's a celebration. And that's, I mean, I know you can't get involved in it, but they should talk about, hey, this is your Constitution, this is Declaration of Rights. You know, it's more of an introduction type of thing. But at least they're, at least they're being exposed to it, so that when they do have it as a part of the curriculum, they've heard it, they can understand it better, is the purpose.
Does nobody make a textbook relative to the Constitution and the history that led up to making that determination on seventeen eighty-nine?
Very, it's in the textbooks. And first of all, the instructional materials, a lot of them are online now. So it is in the textbook. Now, what I want y'all to understand about textbooks, back in my day, when, again, when I was in Ms. Parker's class, we opened that textbook on page one, and on May thirty-first, we finished it on page three twenty-seven. Teachers do not teach that way anymore. They say it's a resource. And what they'll do is they will pick different pieces from different things. And the other thing that has changed with your textbooks, so it almost doesn't even matter what's in the textbook anymore. The other thing that has changed is the textbooks only have to have fifty percent of the state's curriculum in it. And the districts don't have to buy that, they can buy anything they want, the state gives them the money. Used to, the state would buy the books from the publishers. And let me tell you, that has changed publishing. Back when the state was buying directly from the publishers and then shipping it out to the schools, publishers would do a new edition just for Texas, and sometimes a brand-new book just for Texas. So what was nice about that is the Texas curriculum then became the national curriculum because all they would do would be just change it a little bit. Well, because of the changes the legislature made, that's not happening anymore. Now what's happening is they take their national edition and just put some of the Texas stuff in.
With the Constitution being covered in every social studies course, does that mean that, let's take the student K through twelve, that assuming they're taking at least one social studies course per year, that that Constitution would actually cover twelve or perhaps thirteen times?
That's the goal. That's the goal. This is your eighth-grade curriculum. Analyze how the Constitution reflects the principles of limited government, republicanism, checks and balances, federalism, separation of powers, popular sovereignty, and individual rights. This is your US history. Analyze, evaluate, detect, intent, meaning, and importance of. Analyze and evaluate founding principles. Explain the meaning and historical significance of the mottos, "E Pluris Unum" and "In God We Trust." So this is in our curriculum. But what hap, but we don't know what happens when that teacher closes the door. And that's, but I just want you to know that, and I'm very much American exceptionalism. My father was a World War II naval man. So I very much believe that we've got to have American exceptionalism. This is your high school government course.
Go back, quick, quick. I'll read that sample.
One thing, and then after I started looking on all this today, I thought, well, I wonder what we test on? So we have an eighth-grade social studies test, and then we have a high school history test. And I even, I pulled all of this out today, went through here and looked at all of it. And you know what I found? You remember what we did on the eighth grade, all the things that we had to learn about the Constitution? Out of forty-three items on the test, how many do you think were on the Constitution?
Three. Zero, nine, one.
One. So what I'm wondering is, do we need to beef the test up on the Constitution? And maybe that might instill in the teachers to teach it a little stronger, to teach it a little more in depth. Yes.
When I was saying civics, I wasn't thinking about this. That to me is a given. Civics to me was, how do you fill out an income tax return? How do you vote? How does a bill get proposed and get passed? How do you fund government?
That would be in the government.
That's not in the... How do you fund government?
I know, but there are other TEACs that are in there that would cover those things. This is just the Constitution.
That's something that the vast majority of the population does not understand, how things get funded. And why it's important to vote.
Right. And all of that, I mean, I just pulled out, I mean, these things are, they're very, I mean, the high school history course is fifty-two pages. So there's a lot in there, and those things are covered. Filling out the income tax return, I don't think yes. Another course that Member Hardy and I are trying to work towards to getting required is a personal finance course, to teach personal responsibility, to understand a budget, to understand that just because you look online in your checking account doesn't mean that's what you have if you've written a check or paid a bill. I know, that's what my kids would do. And also, compound interest. You know, what does that mean? Well, I only have to pay them twenty bucks, well, that doesn't cover your interest. So those are all things that we really want to teach more responsibly. And unfortunately, for a lot of our students, especially in the career and technology area, we're having to teach what the teachers call soft skills. How to go up to somebody, to greet somebody, to shake their hand. I mean, because the kids just are not getting these things at home. So that's what we're having to teach in the schools. But I think it's important that we do it, because they've gotta be productive. Yes, Caden?
I was gonna ask you about the equalized wealth level that's used for recapture. Is it the commission, well, I guess the, is it the Commissioner of Education that determines that?
That I don't know.
No, that's the legislature.
That's the legislature, I would think that would be the legislature.
Okay. I guess, the resources I've read is it's the Commissioner of Education that determines, determines a weighted average of what that equalized wealth per student is?
I don't think so. He may be the one that implements what the legislature determines. But I don't know that he does the determination of it.
Okay.
One interesting phrase that I learned is there's a difference between equality and equity. Equality means everything, everybody is equal. Equity means you have what you need. So that's one of the big discussions that goes on at our state level. Are there any other questions that I can answer for you?
The thing that's troubling is that you folks on the state board develop all of these curriculum things, standards, not curriculum. And they go down to the one thousand-plus school districts, and there's absolutely no oversight that these standards are going to be taught in the classroom. They are not accountability. One perfect example is one of the standards calls for teaching and appreciation for free market capitalism. And yet, there's overwhelming evidence that public schools in Texas are teaching our kids a socialist ideology. We've seen that. Today's millennials, the kids who just recently graduated from high school, are the first demographic group to prefer socialism over capitalism. We've seen the euphoria over Bernie Sanders and more lately, Bill O'Rourke. And if we don't stop that, we are acting at our own peril because we will lose Texas to the young millennials who are coming out of public schools without them firing a shot. Now, how do you respond about it, state board member?
I think that that's up to the local districts. They are gonna have to really get into it and find out what's being taught when that door is closed. I don't know if we make a stronger test, if that would do it. I mean, the test that focuses more on these issues like you're just talking about, free enterprise system, capitalism, you know, with socialism, it's great till you run out of somebody else's money. I don't have an answer for that, but I share your concern. But I... But I think that's got to be something that's handled locally.
I have tried to get something started.
Yes.
Members, the local school board members.
I've tried to get something started with the legislature, and they've gone wobbly on putting any burden on educators. They are so afraid of getting voted out of office like Don Huffines and Matt Renaldi, that they are not gonna stand up and oppose an education establishment that's just laughing in the faces of conservative taxpayers.
Plato ISD school board does have a local policy that prohibits bias in the classroom for teaching. And I can get you that exact policy in the terminology, but the problem is, like you said, is it being enforced? It's great to have the policy, but the regulation aspect of enforcing it, that's a difficult policy.
Wait, 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 one at a time.
They do have a policy, but there is no accountability in that, I'm gonna give my personal example because Cody knows. My son loves history. Like, this is, we take extra history classes. He's very conservative, fifteen, he obviously didn't vote. He had to argue with his geography teacher because they would do the lesson, he would make a comment, you're wrong. That's not how it works. He told me, if it wasn't for the fact that the test, um, I'm not, no.
Multiple choice?
It was multiple choice, he wouldn't do well because every question he wrote logically, counter to her personal beliefs, marked wrong. His, he failed the essay, which was actually good, I mean, it was, you know, he's fifteen. A good essay had everything that you would want in it, failed it.
That's why your local school board elections are so important.
And I didn't know I could talk to the local school board because, you know, I don't wanna mark my kid. I don't wanna mark my kid. He already has a problem now, a girl slapped him because he wore Trump hat. I actually went to school with my little, I have a mini constitution. I'm like, oh, no. Just in case they told me he was not allowed to say anything.
But her type of problem, pardon me, but her type of situation goes to the local school board, not to the State Board. There's not any thing you can really do there, right?
But I wanna, you know, it's like you're living the exact life that we are with my daughters growing up and even in the Collin College. But in high school, we really, we really do see when the door is closed. It's not in your face all the time, but it, it's there. And the most difficult thing is when I hear it, I wanna say something about it. But again, I don't want any revenge taken out on my kid because I came and said something like that. So if you're in a catch.
I think it's time to one at a time. Go ahead.
Well, one approach is to form a citizen mentoring group that are older people that aren't kids in school, so the teacher can't leverage them. And have them auditing these kids and also discussing learning work. Hey, I'm mentoring about sixty kids at a time at the University of Maine, have been for decades. And you have no idea how we're going to stay nailing this.
Okay. I'm gonna ask, Phyllis Cole was a school, on a school board before becoming a county commissioner. Do you have a frame of reference or some information to share?
Well, I was on, on the school board, I ran for school board, that's how I got into politics. One of the things that I will tell you all, that I tell my children, and they're, and I have grandchildren. My grandchildren are thirteen and eighteen, and Hardy hears you. I said, this is what I tell my children, my daughters, and for my grandchildren. It's your responsibility to know what your children are doing. You have to let them talk to you. You have to talk to them. And I was telling, a little while ago, the, now the school district here, Plano, has the mom, the parent can go in and look nightly at what's going on, what the kids' grades are, what they turned in, what they didn't turn in. But I tell my girls, I said, look, you get together with your friends, your kids' friends' parents, and y'all sit down, have dinner on Saturday night, whatever, and talk about what's going on. What you hear, what she hears, what he hears, and then work it out from there. Because you can have an effect. And, and I also tell, they have to vote, they have to know who's on the school board. And trust me, they do. And they've got a group that they connect with. So that's the problem because, yes, the, the teachers are teaching not necessarily maybe what you and I might think is the best thing. But it's our responsibility as grandparents and parents to get in there, knock on that door, bang on it if you have to, and make yourself heard. You can't turn it over to somebody on the State Board or somebody on the local board. You've got to take the responsibility.
Okay. Now Pam, one more thing to come out. What is the root system that's been implemented by the Director of Education on the story in the different schools?
The A through F?
Go ahead, dear.
Well, actually, all the schools up here did very well. I mean, they were, they did well, but they don't like it. And one of the reasons that they don't like it is because it's a very small sliver of what they did.
Expand upon what the procedure is.
Well, I'm not gonna know exactly the procedure. I know the results. It was a grading system where the schools were graded A, A through F. And like I said, most of them up here, I think Mesquite had some Bs, but most of them up here were As. But the district, even though they made, they did well on it, their concern was that it just showed a small sliver of what they really do for our student population. I think it's good that we have that ranking. I, I like that because it gives you some sense of what the districts are doing. But I would like to see it expanded to include more criteria for our, for our districts, so, yes.
I have this, two different questions has to do with technology. In Collin County, we had one of the best JP ever, John Pigment. And he used to send quite a few truancy to children to my wife for teaching physics and chemistry. For the last seventy years, he's been there. Last four, five years, what we found out, students were not getting books. You have to use technology online, teachers teach online, there's no books, books are online. And she's asked a tutor and child coming to her house, don't have book. So we looked into it in our, well, they have access to it at home, online. Next time around, okay, tap to the guy. Well, we have only one computer. My brother wants to use it, my mom wants to use it, I don't get to use it. Then we go to library, we're like, we're still up in home. Library had only two copies of each kind of books to download because every, more copies you get, downloads simultaneously, more they have to pay. And child is, I mean, we have to use technology with some wisdom on top of it. But we in the store, they were using technology instead of giving me a book to save money. And child is getting shock chased.
Yeah. I mean, it was probably about ten years ago when we started going to the online books.
People use it.
Yeah. Well, that's when it started, was ten years ago.
Yes.
Now, what should happen, and I, I mean, every school district is different, but those teachers should have a classroom set of textbooks that they should be able to check out to a student that needs it. That was, when we started talking about all this technology, and again, that got into the equal versus equity, we knew that not every student was gonna have a computer that they had access to. I mean, you may have ones, like you said, one per family.
We're getting ahead of the technology itself, putting the technology ahead.
Okay. Now Pam, I've got another question. Let's move on. Now, how can we here at Collin County Republican Men's Club and concerned parents help you?
Well, you can help me by staying on top of your school board and your school district because this is what we've got to do. We've got to get, we've got to get the reading scores up. I mean, that's just horrific that our reading scores, not only are they low, but they're dropping. I mean, that's just unbelievable. So that's the first thing. Is in every one of you, if you've got grandkids, kids, whatever, you need to find out how your child is learning to read. Are they learning through phonics? Are they learning through sight words? And you get, you get that instruction, and you talk to the teacher, and you find out what she's, I would even go sit in the reading classes. If you've got the time. Go find out how they're teaching reading. Find out how they're teaching math. One of my concerns about the way we do our instructional materials now, because they can buy whatever they want, is a lot of common core products are slipping into the curriculum. So you need to know what, what is it that they're using instructional? And find out some background on that piece of instruction. You know, if they show you a reader, if they show you an online book, who's the publisher? Did the State Board approve that? Do you know what percentage of the TICs, the state's curriculum, it has in it? Those are the questions that you need to ask.
Now, who do you ask those questions to?
To the teachers. I ask them to the teachers. And then if you don't like what you're hearing, then you need to take it to the curriculum people. Your curriculum director, your reading supervisor, your science supervisor, your math supervisor. I've got a question back there.
So the third, the reading levels going down, is that, is there like a certain part of Texas that's kinda showing that, or is that kind of?
You know, we looked at that. We were hoping that maybe it was lower socioeconomic that was causing that. But down in the valley are some of the higher reading scores, where we've got more of the free and reduced lunch. So I, it is just across the state.
You know, we've got kids playing with iPhones, whatever, all these.
And there's way too much of that.
And we have parents that are not involved.
That's the biggest problem.
Well, that's what Phyllis said. You've got to be involved.
Pam, this gentleman, I want you to identify yourself and stand up. You've been around for twenty-five years, I'm a senior student. What's your name?
Bill Ains.
Bill Ains, all right. Now tell them, you're the author of what book? You got it with you?
It's a book called Texas Trumps, The Left War on History. It's a story about how two thousand nine and two thousand ten leftist educators on review panels tried to hijack American history and turn it into a leftist portrayal of America being not such a great place. We overcame that.
Now, what advice would you give the parent here in Collin County in dealing with the problems they're concerned?
I, I was gonna say that the Texas Association of School Boards has a training module for school boards that is titled, "How to Handle Parents Who Push Back." So, so school boards have a relatively contentious view of parents who come before the school board meetings. And it's really hard to get through because they are basically, in my opinion, lapdogs to the superintendent.
All right. I appreciate what you've done historically, Tanci, thanks for your, you've done a hell of a good job.
Yeah, he, Phil served on all of Tanci's review committees for the social studies books and for the TICs reviews. And thanks to him, we've got a strong social studies.
They did not want American exceptionalism in the standard.
All right. Thank you, bud. Now, we need to close it off.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I thank you for letting me come talk to you tonight. My door is always open. I like to talk to parents, I like to visit in schools. So if you see something happening in a school that's particularly exciting or something that I should know more about, please get in touch with me. You can get me through the State Board of Education, my email is there. And I really want to be a very visible State Board member. I want to be in the schools. I wanna be working with parents, working with teachers, working with educators. Thank you.
Talking out our appreciation.
Oh, thank you.
Tremendous program.
Thank you.
How long is your term?
It is for four years. Thankfully. I think if I had to run again in two years, I'd shoot myself.
Are we done with this?
Uh, yes, our program. We are.
You want my computer back?
Please. You know what we gotta do. All right. Now let's do a special thing here. All candidates or elected officials line up over here. And everybody's got sixty seconds to tell us all your names, okay? So candidates and elected officials.
One of my favorites, thank you.
All right. That's great. What are you trying to entertain? Can we turn the light off for just one while they come through? And then, well, there you go.
My name is Scott Grace. I've got twenty-five years of experience in finance, audit, and accounting experience in multi-billion dollar companies. I also feel that management and, and finance, uh, left officials should be held accountable. And that's one of the reasons I'm running for Tax Assessor here in Collin County. The primary is in, one year away. It'll be here before you know it. So I appreciate your support. We'll let that go.
Very touched, my pleasure.
Good evening. My name is Jay Sad. I'm running for Collin College Board of Trustees, position two. Why do I wanna run for it? I got three kids in college. So I appreciate the value of an education, and I appreciate being broke. It's more than that. We got, I'm pro-business, been in the business community for over thirty-one years. And we have to say pro-business. In order for our kids to get jobs, they have to be educated. And the stronger our community is, the higher the level of education will be. So I'm focusing on education and the kids. Thank you very much. Again, Jay Sad.
Young lady?
I'm here to speak for Tim Chapel, who is running for Collin College Trustee, place six. He has a formidable opponent. I'm going to tag you that up front. Stacy Arias. It is the only time you will ever hear me say her name. That is a no-no when you're running for an office. But Tim is a pulmonologist. He is on the staff at Presbyterian Hospital. He's a graduate at the University of Nebraska, graduated summa cum laude. And he came to Dallas for postgraduate training in internal medicine and a fellowship in pulmonary medicine at UT Southwestern. He was then appointed as an assistant professor of medicine at the university. And, and Parkland, I'm sorry.
Bless your heart.
He has been medical director of respiratory care and assistant chief of pulmonary at the Veterans Administration here in Dallas. And he's done a lot of research. He has been published in numerous medical journals. And as I said, he's on the staff at Presbyterian Hospital. He has also been at the college with their health science.
What? It's on the Medical Advisory Board.
Yes, the Medical Advisory Board. He has just got credentials, and we need your help. Tim Chapel.
And he's conservative?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, you would ask me that.
Thank you, young lady. And you know, I'm not endorsing anyone. As president, I do not endorse anyone. But I talked with Dr. Matkins and Bob Collins, the chairman. It's imperative that we have a conservative leader on our board. Not easy to talk about social issue, but on our six-hundred-million-dollar bond program and expansion of our school from fifty thousand students plus a hundred thousand, whatever it's gonna be, we need people that have some broader knowledge than just social issues. And so give him special consideration. All right, young man, come on.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Cody Weaver, and I'm running for Plano ISD, place number seven. And I believe in transparency, accountability, and opportunity. I love Plano, and I love what our community's been able to accomplish over the past couple of years, really, past couple of decades. And I want to preserve and improve what we've been able to build so every child in Plano can have access to a superior public school education. So I grew up in a service culture. My father served in the United States Army. My mother was in law enforcement, now education. And I've got a desire to serve this community, a community that produced a very important Plano graduate, my wife. So she came through this system, and she's currently carrying the next generation of Plano students that will be here in August twenty nineteen. So it's very important for me to make sure this district is on the right path so the schools and the education is good for my child and everybody else's children. Thank you so much, and I hope to have your vote on May fourth.
And your name?
Cody Weaver.
Who's your campaign treasurer?
Dr. Yorm Solomon.
All right. Young lady?
My name is Samantha Boykin. And as you heard, that was part of my reason of me stepping up to run for PISD Board, place five. I have five kids. One is in college now. I'm in the trenches. I see the day to day. I'm here seeing the kids, talking to the teachers, and getting that pushback. But I do want to focus on responsibility. And responsibility is to our students, to the parents, to the community, and to the taxpayers. Because I live and work here. And I do want accountability. And accountability is to people. It's to others. It's not a number. It's you're accountable for what you've done to other people. And I do want to focus on the community. Like the gentleman said, people need to be involved. They need to know, help some students, the grandparents, getting more people involved so they don't feel alone, the kids don't feel alone, and actually, parents don't feel alone. So it's more of a.
And when's the election?
May 4th.
May 4th?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Hey folks, Jim Warren, Collin College. This is a big thing here today. So I'm currently one of the board members on the Collin College Board Trustees. What people tend to forget is how important this one is. It's kind of a hidden race that people jump into to get to call them level politics, call them county level politics sometimes. So what I'm here asking you guys to do is pay attention, pick a candidate, support a candidate. Don't forget, these things are countywide. We have to run from Salina to Farmersville to Dallas to Richardson and everything in between. So we need all the support we can get and help. So just pick a candidate, help them out.
How many students are at Collin College now?
This semester right now, we've got almost 33,000 students.
And you know, in, for the reasons I give.
Full time credit, they're the number that you have full part time and everything. It's up to.
You get to double count. It's like 50, 50, 60.
60.
Right. And it is crazy. You grew almost 8% this year. So in terms of, I think you were talking about certificates earlier. And oh, by the way, four years is great. Six years is even better. But we've got the technical campus coming up.
Tell them a little bit about that.
Okay. So you know, when I ran four years ago, one of the big topics was just that. How do we get people ready for certifications? How do we extend what happens in the high school into the technical environment? So one of the points of the bond is of building a technical campus. It's focused on direct certification. So it's auto repair, HVAC, all the trades, really. And you find out some really interesting things. Like there's a guy who runs a big HVAC company here in town. He goes out to Princeton every year, grabs a group of graduates from high school, sends them to Oklahoma for training, as long as they agree to come back and work for a couple of years. That's how short those kind of skills are here in this town. You know, Collin County, you know, hey, we're Collin County, right? We don't, we don't do trades.
And that's kind of so big where?
Yeah, it's up on 121 in Alma, kind of in that area. You can see the construction now. If you drive past it, it's there for sure. We've also got the Wiley Campus coming up. When, when the three campuses were put in, you used to be able to drive from Wiley to the Plano Campus in about 22 minutes. Right now, it's about 45 minutes during rush hour. The other part most people don't realize is that Spring Creek's really at capacity. Try driving by there at 2:30 or 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Takes almost 20 minutes to get out of the parking lot. And it's just not, it's not built in terms of the overall capacity of the college. So we think, based on the studies that we've got done so far, is that almost a third of the capacity of Spring Creek will free up as we move up to Wiley.
Where do we stand on the four-year college program?
So that is an interesting exercise. And the way it's done is that the state grants you certain programs. At certain points, you apply for them. So what we're going for initially is like cybersecurity, respiratory health and nursing. And those are all in process right now. Fall of 2020 is really when we think that they'll, they'll launch this and when we get through a few things. And an amazing thing happens is they want all kinds of stuff to happen.
So to get a full degree.
Yes.
From Collin.
Yeah, from Collin. Yeah. And it'll start with just those first few core programs. And then we'll kind of extend from there based on the needs of the community that we're in.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So we're really.
Thank you very much. Now, you're in the fourth year of your, it's your term.
Yes. So I'm up next time.
All right.
And there are very concerted efforts to work against some of us. So you know, just pay attention, support your local candidate. And if you have any questions, it's jim@jimwar.us. It's pretty easy to find.
Leading question.
Yeah.
Is Collin County College evenly based or is it liberally biased with most colleges?
Well, I, well, okay. So the people come from the same, the same pool.
Talking to faculty and the administration.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, it's much more conservative. It's much more conservative than you would normally call it. Right? Because it draws from the community.
I was saying, where your kids go to college is important. And most colleges are liberally biased. If you don't want your kids to be liberally biased, don't let them go to a liberally biased college. And that includes Harvard and Stanford and all the other big name colleges.
I assure you, I assure you, our college, Collin College, is a conservatively deal. Bob Collins, who's the chairman of the board, has been chairman for 30 years, and he's an outstanding conservative leader. And worked with Bob and being a friend of Bob, I'm very, I can attest, he's a very strong conservative. And this young man is too.
Thanks, man.
Appreciate it for you.
You got any questions? Any other candidates?
Compliment to Collin College. My granddaughter went from McKinney Hospital, initially went to the University of Arkansas. She calls it the dual credit class is a tall guy. She graduated in three years with honors from the University of Arkansas.
Yeah, it's, it's great stuff. So for my, my oldest daughter, she saved Collin in dual credit and the classes we're taking here, we figured saved about $28,000 on my bill at Texas A&amp;M. My son's done two years though there. And if you follow the transfer path, he's an automatic admin to Texas A&amp;M in his third year of history. So there's a lot of work to be done.
Yes.
And he's got lots of.
Okay. Any other candidates or any other, okay. Let's come on through our program. Who's going to play you a battle, Mike? Let's get our tickets. Everybody get their tickets for a drawing. Let's mention a couple announcements here. If you haven't viewed us on Facebook, go to Facebook, CCRMC. Delarque and crew have done a fabulous job of communicating through Facebook. And Mark, we're actually, we're actually reaching around 1,100 people on Friends of Friends. It's a tremendous tool. And is this everybody's stuff?
Oh, guest speaker.
Just a minute. Hang on. Hey.
Well, just a second here. What is it?
We got one. Anybody else need a ticket?
Okay. Remember, let me know about the leak today as soon as you can. Okay? And we also need to get the check in. Daniel, make a check. Have a Collin County pumpkin party. Okay? And a call me if you have any questions. Next month, we have two special programs developing. I will let you know through the Facebook and the newsletter which one you choose. But both of them are going to be extremely garden. You're going to find them very interesting. Okay? Both, either or are going to be flame burners. All right. Are y'all ready for the wheel of auction? Okay. For first of all, let's go and pick, let's shake them up and pick out one and read it off. So here the winner is. No, 4206. That's inconvenient.
Why doesn't it pick again? You want to draw next time?
Who wants to come be, come on down and come spin the wheel. Okay? Young lady, you want to spin?
I'll spin it.
All right, Judge Rebel, wait. He's going to.
Oh, I didn't know you were coming.
Come ahead, I'll please. Yeah. Just spin your wheel.
I don't know. Where's that flag?
Are you running the state government? What are you doing there?
Sam, where's the sheet? Where's Sam? You got the sheet? All right. What's the number? Number two.
$50 gift certificate.
All right. Pam, you know Pam. Okay. Any last?
Yes. I just wanted to point out, as mentioned earlier, one of the candidates just came in. He's actually here, was over at another program. And Shelby, Jill paid the moment. We're just letting you have a chance to talk to him.
Thank you. I won't take up much time. I don't have the only thing standing between you and home. So.
Why you have 59 seconds?
Starting now. Good evening, everybody. My name is Shelby Williams. I'm running for Plano City Council, place five. Now, as many of you know, my wife Maria and I moved to Plano 15 years ago because it's a tremendous city. We chose Plano out of all the places in North Texas, actually out of all the places on the planet, because it's perennially the safest, among America's safest cities, best place to raise a family, et cetera. So we started a family here. And we want to make sure that the qualities that drew us here in the first place are maintained and enhanced. We want to make sure that the tax situation that we're all feeling the crush of is addressed. Our city taxes have gone up almost 50% in five years. There's no reason for that. I want to address that. And I want to make sure above all that we increase transparency and accountability and open our city government to more people, make it more comprehensible, and drive more engagement. So I ask you for your vote on May 4th, and I ask you for your support. Thank you very much.
Are you the eligible conservative in the race?
One might say that, but I encourage you to do your research. In fact, I just met the Democrat opponent. I know he's nonpartisan, but we are all Republicans and Democrats anyway.
The resolution.
Okay. Thank you, young man. Thank you very much.
It dropped off. Hold on. I need to get back.
All right, our closing comment. Let's get our technical side going here. JJ, appreciate you driving up. Okay, JJ's here in Collin County and a dear friend of mine. Okay? And now, are you ready? Let's see. Delarque, he's our best nerd we got. He's a good one. All right. All right. Got to get over here. So black button. I just want everyone to know that partly what we need to do New Year's resolutions, that we follow through on those resolutions. I want you to turn off this light.
Row one.
Row one. All right. And y'all share with me, and let's be sure we keep, keep an eye on. But our number one resolution, what is it? Stop procrastinating. We delay, avoid facing a problem instead of searching for a solution. One way is to what? Join the Collin County Republican Council. All right. Resolution two, develop confidence. Aren't you political candidates do that, right? Trust your own ability. Take some chances. You would become happier. One way to boost your self-confidence is to join the Collin County Republican Council. All right, Fred, you like that?
Yes.
Okay, number three, learn to recognize stress. Our modern lifestyle causes positive and negative stress. Stress can be handled. How about friends? Join the CCRMC. Let's follow them through. There's number four next. Seek to meet new people. Garden, you need to meet some new people. Okay? I need to get on the other side. Discover the opportunity of meeting new and interesting people. How do we do that?
Join the CCRMC.
You're catching on. Move it up a little bit. Become a leader. Can you move it up a little bit? Grow up just a little bit. Number five, become a leader. Help others achieve their goal. Share their journey.
Join the CCRMC.
You're catching on. Number six, volunteer your time. Help others in their lifestyle.
Join the CCRMC.
You're getting the message? Have we gotten the new application forms out? Okay. Are we here? Are we on number eight?
Seven.
Number seven, discover yourself. Now, that's very important, right?
Join CCRMC.
Or are we, discover yourself. Explore a new perspective of life on which you may never have dreamed possible.
Join CCRMC.
We're almost there. All right. Become more responsible. Take the time to think before making decisions.
Join CCRMC.
I'm loving you. Love to be happy. Learn to be happy. Take patience to find joy. Okay? Don't let problems get you down.
Join CCRMC.
Are we on number 10 yet?
Yes, sir.
Number 10, develop good habits. Work on your New Year's resolutions until they become a part of your lifestyles. This is true self-improvement.
Join CCRMC.
Thank you all. Yes, sir. Excuse me, if I could take just six more seconds. I forgot to invite you all to our campaign kickoff next Tuesday, 26th, from 6 to 8 p.m. in Lubbock, Warren, Texas. I'd like to invite you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you all, everyone. Nice seeing you, Bill. Okay, I appreciate what you've done. See you all next month. Thank you so much.
Thank you, dear.